Councilman for March 26th is now in session. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, I'd like a moment of silence for my daddy who passed away this week, as well as to the Houliet family, who I've been knowing all my life. Both of the parents died this week. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich, here. Spitali.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Higgs.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warple.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Vanez.
Here. Let the record reflect, nine present, zero absent. Moving on to reading of the minutes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
The motions accepted minutes from March 12, 2018.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, to approve the minutes of March 12, 2018. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to approval of claims.
Madam Chair Lady.
Yes, Councilman.
Move for approval of claims, March 7 through March 21, 2018, for council meeting, March 26, 2018, beginning with claims dated 3/9/18 and ending with claims dated 3/21/18. Claims number 1591 through claim number 1961 inclusive, for a total of $24,535,514.15. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Higgs, for approval of claims from March 7 through March 21. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. Claims pass, nine in favor, zero opposed. Moving on to public hearings, there are none. Communications.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I received a correspondence from Dean Button, our city engineer, says the following list of tree removals, and a cycling on private property as city property requested by Councilman Higgs. He has requested that the owner be cited, and if no action is taken within the appropriate time to have the city remove the trees, or clear the brush, and put a lien on the property under respectable private properties, or simply clear the city lots. Tree removals, inspection department issue citations. Falling stumps to be removed from the rear yard of 937 Ames Street, parcel number 45-0706 307 030 000 023. Tree, rear yard near alley of 839 Becker, parcel number 45-07-06-0102 028 000 023. 1003 Kenwood, one dead tree, parcel number 45-0706 329 020 000 023. Clear property, 1221 Porter Road, parcel number 45-0706 207 003 000 023. Redevelopment. 903 to 907 Kenwood, parcel number 45-0706 308 014 000 023 through 45-07 03 45-07, excuse me, 06 308 016 000 023. 909 to 911 Kenwood Avenue, parcel number 45-0706 308 017 000 023, and 45-07 06 308 018 000 023. 1027 Kenwood, parcels number 45-0706 329 030 000 023. 911 Ames Street, parcel number 47 45 07 06 307 021 000 023, City of Hammond. Those particular properties and trees, me and Mr. Button, who's in the audience, our city engineer took the time to go throughout my district and locate the properties where the trees are falling down, and I've been requesting that the inspection department do something in regards to these particular trees. So, at some point in this meeting, I will request the mayor, have the inspection department do what's needed so that these trees can be removed. And I do thank you, Mr. Button, for taking your time out of your busy day and helping me in assisting trying to get these trees taken down.
If I might, Councilman Higgs, I do know that the inspections department has been citing that, so they're working on that, and in due course, we'll get that completed for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Recently, in the last six months, two homes have been broken in on the street that I live and grew up on. So, I personally went door to door throughout my precinct, and actually gave out letters, and it says, "In the last six months, two homes have been broken into on Moore Street. Residents need to be more vigilant in our community. If you see anything suspicious, please call the Hammond Police Department. It is our responsibility as a community to look out for each other. Your Councilman, Anthony W. Higgs." So, these particular community alerts were placed throughout my district, so people are aware of what's going on. And it's something that hasn't been happening, and that I know of, in years, and like, two homes have been broken in the last six months, so it really scares me to know that.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Mayor Thomas McDermott Jr. and the City of Hammond Police Department are seeking applications for the new Hammond Academy Board Scholarship Program, program sponsors Hammond residents wishing to become Hammond police officers. Applications will be accepted starting Monday, March 19, through Thursday, March 29, in the chief's office at the Hammond Police Department. They are located at 509 Douglas Street in Hammond. Applications must be submitted no later than 4:00 p.m. on March 29. Interested candidates must be between the ages of 21 to 25, and possess a valid Indiana driver's license, must have been a Hammond resident for at least three years, and be a U.S. citizen, must be a high school graduate, or possess a GED, must be able to pass the Indiana Law Enforcement Academy interest standards, and physical agility, must never have been convicted of a felony or domestic battery offense, must not have a dishonorable discharge for the U.S. military, must meet all requirements established by the Hammond Police Department and the Northwest Indiana Law Enforcement Academy. Anyone with questions may contact Candace Porter at 219-852-6329.
Thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications are now closed. Moving on to committee reports, there are no committees met this evening. However, as usual, I do have the announcement of the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. On Tuesday, March 27, the Pulaski Park Neighborhood Association will meet at the American Legion on Goslin, beginning at 6:30 p.m. On Wednesday, April 3, the Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet at the VFW on Holman Avenue, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Wednesday, April 4, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School, beginning at 6:30 p.m. And Friday, April 6, Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School, beginning at 9:15 a.m. This is an opportunity for anyone within the city to attend a community and crime watch or crime watch meeting to find out what's going on in your neighborhood. Councilman Higgs just mentioned a couple of occurrences in his neighborhood. In my neighborhood, there was an incident that was on the Chicago News. So, please come out and find out what's going on in your neighborhood. Please come out and find out preventative measures that you can take to prevent from, for you, from becoming a victim of a crime, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Committee reports is now closed. Moving on to ordinance, third and final reading, there are none. Introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance number 18-05, sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance to appropriate monies into the 2018 gaming fund.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading, place in finance with a public hearing on April 23, and the finance hearing will be at 5:15.
On April 23.
On April 23.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of 1805, with a finance committee meeting on April 23 at 5:15, and a public hearing on April 23 as well. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item B, ordinance 18-06, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the motel innkeeper's tax fund for economic development purposes.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
I move for the first and second reading, refer to finance committee, with a public hearing also for April 23, 2018, and a financing meeting at 5:15 also.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, for first and second reading of 1806, referring to finance, with a committee meeting on April 23 at 5:15, and a public hearing also on April 23. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Item C, ordinance 18-07, sponsored by Councilman Warple, and ordinance amending ordinance number 8514 Bean, and ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, also known as the Hammond Zoning Ordinance, for purposes of amending Title 29 overlay zoning districts to establish new provisions for development within the OXPO Landing Overlay Zoning District.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Warple.
Move for first and second reading, refer to finance?
No, I'm sorry.
Zoning? I'm sorry. I need my glasses again. With a committee hearing at 5:15 on April 9.
Second.
Intent to consider.
With an intent to consider.
Thank you.
I am in my motion to, with the intent to consider, on 18-08.
07.
07, sorry.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? I'm sorry. Motion by Councilman Warple, second by Councilman Higgs, for first and second reading of 1807, referring to zoning, with a meeting on April 9 at 5:15, and an intent to consider. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I'd just like to reference in regards to that particular location, where this property is located. It has been really redeveloped, and it really is a nice area, and I would hope that at some point, some sections of my district would be that beautified, because it is really, it really is nice. One of the buildings, 2900, I think it is, it was developed there, and then you have 3W wings and some other hotels on that property. And then, years ago, it used to be the Kennedy Park Apartments, when I was a kid, and now all the apartments are gone, and now we have hotels and restaurants, and it's, I just compliment the fact of that being developed is such a nice, so nice to look at. Even from the expressway, you look at it, and you'd be like, wow, what is that? So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
Can you just read that back one more time? I didn't quite catch the date and all.
Okay. So, first and second reading of 1807, referring to zoning, with a committee meeting on April 9 at 5:15, and an intent to consider.
For the 9th, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item D, ordinance 18-08, sponsored by Councilman Spitali, and ordinance appropriating the proceeds of the Annual Action Plan, and dealing with other matters pertaining to the expenditure of plan proceeds for program year 2018.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Move for first and second reading, refer to the finance committee, with the public hearing set for April 23, 2018, and also a committee meeting at 5:15.
Second.
And an intent to consider, is that correct?
No.
No? Okay.
Public hearing.
Oh, you're correct. Motion by Councilman Spitali, who was the second? Councilman Emerson, for first and second reading of 1808, referring to finance, with a committee meeting on April 23 at 5:15 p.m., with an intent to, am I on the right one?
No, it's public hearing.
With a public hearing on 4/23. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
What this is, is the 2018 CDBG budget. It's this thick, it's federal dollars, and it's worth $2.7 million. Those of you that came to caucus today would know that we got our $2017 in January. But, this is a very important budget that we have to look at and pass. It's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. And those are federal dollars?
Those are federal dollars.
Yes. Alrighty, thank you. So, did I say 1808? Okay. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Just to add to that, the programs that are provided through the CBG allocation are very vital to the community. They help with a number of issues that affect the entire city, shelter, and emergency assistance for elderly and whatnot. So, it's very vital that we have those programs in position for those that are less fortunate, so, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
President Vanez, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to resolutions.
Item A, Resolution 18-R, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Hammond, authorizing the filing of an annual action plan application, and designating signatories for payment vouchers on letters of credit for the 2018 Annual Action Plan Programs.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
Move for final passage of 18-R-11.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, for final passage of 18-R-11. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
This resolution is to apply for this grant that we just, the council people are talking about.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 18-R-11 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, Resolution Number 18-R-12, sponsored by Councilwoman Vanez. A resolution appropriating money from the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
I move that we pass Resolution 18-R-12, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Spitali, for final passage of 18-R-12. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Rakels.
This is the request from the Clerk's office, $50,000 worth of funds into that fund, the Perpetuation Fund. Money's collected into the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund as a fee for all civil, criminal, infraction, and ordinance violations, and copying fees. This request will be for the preservation of records, and the improvement of record-keeping systems and equipment. And this appropriation is from the Clerk's Perpetuation Fund. No tax dollars are being used.
Thank you, Councilman Rakels. Any discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 18-R-12 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item C, Resolution 18-R-13, sponsored by Councilman Spitali. A resolution supporting the use of 2019 gaming funds to complete Hammond's Blue Net perimeter.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Spitali.
For final passage of 18-R-13.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Emerson, for final passage of 18-R-13. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
The City of Hammond is proud to announce this Hammond's Blue Net. It's a string of 33 permanently mounted license plate reading cameras, are now permanently mounted and fully operating in all exits and entrances of the City of Hammond. Thirty-three permanent locations will aid it by two mobile units that are continuously operating in police cars, and operating at all times on the streets of Hammond. Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Higgs.
Councilman Markovich stated to me that he looked at the document, and it says 13. Is it 33 or 13? Kevin? Is Kevin here?
13.
13?
These are additionals, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, these are additional to what we already currently have?
That's my understanding, yes. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes. 18-R-13 passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Vanez, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Moving on to new and unfinished business. Any new and unfinished business? Any new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. Moving on to public expression. The first speaker of the evening is Tamara McCoy. If you would please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam President. My name is Tamara McCoy. Address is 6745 Calumet Avenue. I'm here on behalf of the daycare facility that I have. We've been in this business since 2008 in this community, and in the last two years, the state has been, we've had a representative that have been coming out and have been harassing us. I find things missing from my files. I'm constantly asking parents for the same things, birth certificates that they have presented to us. And so, at this point, our back is against the wall. I've noticed that she's closed, they said, closed down daycare facilities in my area, and so now I'm just getting a little concerned, and I need some help, because we're doing everything we're supposed to do, but it's like, I'm not going anywhere with this one representative. I have reached out to her boss, but I'm still not getting anywhere. It's the same thing, we've given her everything. She came and told me to put up a fence, I put up the fence, she came back and said, remove the fence. So, she's costing me extra money. Everything that she want me to do, I do it, and then she come back and she change her plans of what it should be.
Madam President.
Alrighty, thank you. Ma'am, we do not have a discussion back and forth during public expression, so we may return to new and unfinished business at the end of public expression.
Okay.
And Councilman Higgs may want to address this, but at the very least, please hang around.
We will.
After the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, please forgive me, Akita Ramal.
Hi, my name is Zekta Kamal, 10248 Whitehall Garden. I'm here to address you for the DACA resolution. I know it's not being voted on, I know the mayor is discouraging it, but we need to speak up for the oppressed. If we don't do it, then who will? I'm very proud that the Lake County Council and East Chicago has passed the DACA resolution. It's only fair that Hammond should pass it. Hammond has over 2,000 DACA recipients, and they should be supported by their own city. And for that, I just want to make it, by them not being protected by Hammond, it's akin to the Germans who did not speak out for their fellow Jewish neighbors during the Holocaust. I mean, we really need to show them our support, and it will not, you know, affect funding for the City of Hammond. So, I just want to read a quote by Martin Nee Mueller, and it is, I'm sure everybody here is familiar with it. First they came for the communists, but I was not a communist, so I did not speak out. Then they came for the socialists and the trade unionists, but I was not a socialist or a trade unionist, so I did not speak out. Then they came for the Jews, but I was not Jewish, so I did not speak out. And when they came for me, there was no one left to speak out for me. So, the thing is, this Trump regime is after the DACA recipients. He's been after the Muslims. He wanted to initiate a Muslim ban, and we need to, like, stand up for our community. By staying silent, we are complicit. So, I hope that you bring, that you open up, when you can, or if you can, at the end, if you discuss new and, new and open business, or what you're talking about, if you can, please bring up DACA, and please vote for it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Marta Frank. Or Marty Frank, Marta? Thank you.
Marta Frank, 1616 East 142nd Street. What I have to say also regards to DACA, regards DACA. I attend Morton High School, and I'm sure many students at Morton are here in America under DACA. I have never considered someone who was brought here at an early age to be any less American than I am, and I was born in America. And I don't want the, some of the students at my own school to feel threatened by their own country. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. (applause). Thank you very much. Next speaker is Alexandra Hay.
Alexandra Hay, twenty forty-five Castleview Drive, Sherreville. And I'm coming up here in support of encouraging you guys to pass a DACA resolution. It's my understanding that the biggest hesitation is because fear of retribution from state if you are going against government, and I think that, number one, you can't let bullies dictate your policy. If your policy is, is full of integrity and it's the right thing to do, you do the right thing. And also, it's also my understanding that the governor signed SB four nineteen, which allows DACA recipients to apply for licenses, and so it would not appear as though there would be retribution in passing this resolution.
What town did, what town is it that you live in?
Sherreville.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Chris Usuri.
Hi, City Council of Hammond. Thank you for your time, listening to what I brought with me today. I'm Chris Usuri. I'm a resident of Hammond at thirty-three nineteen Orchard Drive. And before I moved here, two years ago, I had lots of friends in the, in the region. And I'm here just to pass on a comment that my good friend, Remundo Anguiano Garcia, wrote to me in response to a question that I put on my Facebook page. And the question is, would you like to see the Hammond City Council pass a resolution supporting DACA? And Remundo, who is a businessman here for many, many, many years in Hammond, and is well-known amongst some of the best folks, his response to me was, of course. In a time when thought and reason are rare, here is an opportunity to show that the Hammond City Council can be thoughtful and reasonable. From any perspective, DACA recipients are valuable members of our economy and our society at large. And I'll say that, Remundo put this up more than a week ago, and since then, we've had our governor, Governor Holcomb, sign the bill allowing DACA recipients to obtain professional licenses in their chosen fields, nursing, and many other very important fields, that should we not have those members of our community, who are legal members of our community, at this point, in danger of having their, their legality withdrawn, depending on the whims of the current government, federal government. Governor Holcomb seems to think that our DACA people are important members of our professional community, and our community at large, as Remundo says. They're students, you know, people who have been here, contributing for a long, long time. And I understand that the Hammond City Council cannot make, make this happen for them, keep their, their status here as legal. And I understand, it, it may seem like a very small thing, but as Remundo said to me, also not on this, but when we were talking, he said, yes, people need to know that they are valued and welcome in their community. And it would be thoughtful and reasonable, again in Remundo's words, for the City Council to simply pass a resolution saying that we think that these people are valuable members of our community and welcome here.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Next speaker is Carl Wolf.
I, I brought the family. I don't know if you passed up Max Wolf on the list?
Speaker's list?
Maxwell Wolf? Max Wolf? Is he on there?
No, I don't see a Max Wolf on here.
Oh, okay. We thought he had signed up. Nonetheless, he'll do it next time if necessary. So thank you for having me again. My name's Carl Wolf, seventy-one twenty-eight Monroe, Hammond, Indiana, here again to talk about the necessity to pass a resolution for DACA. And the last three, well, the last few times that we've had this discussion, it's been brought up that it is not the role of the city to speak on issues of national, or even state, for that matter, importance, that it's not our business, our business is to run a city. And last time I was here, I pointed out, well, in fact, the council and the city and the administration does go out on a limb and do heroic things, like supporting the LGBTQ community back a few years ago when Governor Pence signed that RFRA law. And the mayor, and I imagine the council, supported him in that, in saying, no, you can't do this to the LGBTQ community. So at that time, took a stand, said, we're gonna, we're gonna challenge the state on this, we're not gonna be scared. And in fact, back in September, when DACA, when, when Trump first passed, first got rid of the law, or tried to, our own Mayor McDermott was quoted in the Post Tribune and on the Chicago Tribune website to this day, saying, "President Trump's decision to terminate DACA is a cruel and heartless blow to vulnerable young citizens who want nothing more than a chance at the American dream." Instead of creating a path to citizenship for the eight hundred thousand youth in this program, President Trump has decided to punish those who did step forward through the threat of deportation from the only country they have ever known," McDermott said. So here is the mayor, oh, thank you, here's the mayor of Hammond, I have copies for everybody, going on the public record, on the Chicago Tribune website to this day, saying, putting it out there, saying, we can do this, we can speak up for our people, and heroically he did. And then in fact, in December, not as serious, but a little funny, the mayor decided that it would be important to go and face the Attorney General of Indiana around the question of CBD oil. That's good. Dogs need CBD oil in order to not be in pain. And the Attorney General had said it was no longer legal, and the mayor, and this is, the mayor, I guess, he did it as the mayor, thought it would be worthwhile to, to challenge the Attorney General on that, to the extent that the first dog even considered a campaign for, for Attorney General on Twitter. So here we are, standing up for LGBTQ, standing up for DACA, standing up for the needs of dogs to get CBD oil, facing the powers that be, no fear of retribution. Why can't we do it for DACA kids? It's a house of cards. It's a house of cards that's gonna crumble, because you stand up for when you want to, when it's, when it's, who knows why, I, I can't figure it out. The governor of Indiana is standing up for DACA kids, and yet, this simple resolution, you can't do. It's a house of cards, and it's gonna crumble. And I really encourage you, if we can stand up for dogs, we can surely stand up for children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next speaker is Elizabeth Palacio.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Palacio, at forty-one twenty-four Weg Avenue, Chicago, Indiana. I wanted to know if you know that less than ten miles away from here, at the Gary Airport, they deport our immigrants from our city with more, from more than a hundred and fifty miles away every Friday without fail. Every Friday, unless it's a holiday, then they'll do it on a Monday. This is a shame. I live about less than five miles from there. These are our neighbors, our friends, our family, even veterans, even the veterans. If, if they got in trouble when they were in the Army and they didn't, they couldn't get any help when they wanted it, and then they feel like they're not worth the trouble, they go into that mindset of they don't care, and so they got in trouble, the veteran got in trouble with taking drugs, and even being, have gone to Iraq or Afghanistan, they still get deported for no reason. This is appalling in this day and age. Just recently, like you've heard, our governor has signed legislation for our professional Doc, our DACA recipients to receive their professional, and maintain their professional licenses. I'm asking you to please reconsider this ordinance, this DACA resolution, to pass it. These are our friends and our neighbors, and look at us. We are all nationalities. We're all in this room together. Somebody brought us here. The ones that weren't asked to be brought here, they came looking for a better life. We need to give them that chance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is George Stoya.
I get the funny feeling, I wasn't here last week, I did hear Mayor McDermott present his argument, and I just don't think his argument is fully understood or appreciated. Now, the gentleman that spoke before the woman before me raised some interesting issues. Yeah, he does go to bat on certain things, but in his, I guess, experience with the legislature, he's deemed it an unreasonable risk. And I don't think people understand what, that example he gave with the apartment fee charged apartment, uh, landowners with respect to funding the inspections department, I don't know what the exact department is, but everybody knows what I'm talking about here. But I don't think, I don't think it's fully understood by the DACA advocates that that was pure arbitrary legislation that singled out Hammond, not once, three times. They took three or four bites of the same apple to make damn sure they got it right, so that Hammond would get stuck and thwarted in its local home rule legislation. That costs money, because mo, all legislation that's passed has a presumption of constitutional validity. So not only do you have to go up against that, you've gotta go up against all, you know, you, you have the burden of proof to show that, that it's unconstitutional. And in this case, the state said, yeah, it's unconstitutional, but we should be allowed to do it anyway, because this is, this is an exception. So he had to hump that hurdle, too. That costs dollars, legal fees, Indianapolis attorneys. So I don't think it's fully understood that, I don't, I don't think the, the mayor's position has been given a fair treatment. There has to be a compromise on this. If this council does anything with respect to passing or endorsing a DACA resolution, there has to be some compromise. I don't see any compromise at all out of the DACA advocates. I see a lot of idealism that is single-minded, and, you know, on the verge of being fanatic about it, as if they're right and that justifies anything and everything, but there are costs. There are a lot of costs here, consequences. Now, I don't know what, all, all, you know, the, the mayor feels, I can't, I am not speaking for him, just saying, I don't think that, on a speculative basis, people are fully entering in to what his mindset is or his point of view, and, and they're not understanding how this legislative stuff works. You know, it's not like the state's gonna go out and say, oh, we're gonna get back at you, Hammond. Okay, guys, let's pass some really bad legislation, so that Hammond can end up in court trying to beat it back. Let them go fish. It doesn't operate that way, it's far more subtle, far more discreet. So when the mayor, I think he's a little paranoid, I'm not saying, or I'm not gonna say that, maybe on the defensive about some of the things, because he has been an advocate on certain things, a lot of things, and he's known you. We all know how Mayor McDermott is. Speaks his mind, he speaks it intensely, sometimes just let the chips fall where they may. On this particular thing, he has deemed it, for whatever reason, that's, that it's somewhat an unreasonable risk to come out with a bold statement, and preferring to piggyback on the council's endorsement of DACA, the Lake County Council, that is. So I, I'm just asking that, that these DACA, that you, as a council, please insist and resist this, this, this DACA advocacy, on the condition that they give fair consideration to the mayors, and not just brush it aside as some abstract resistance, because it isn't an abstract issue. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. The final speaker of the evening is Linda Anguiano.
Me llamo Linda Cristina Anguiano. That's pretty basic Spanish. It says, my name is Linda K. Cristina Anguiano. I live at sixty-eight fourteen Colorado Avenue in Hammond. I was raised in Hammond. My mother and father were raised in East Chicago, but moved here shortly after they married. And they wanted a better life for their children, so they moved from the harbor, and my dad was in East Chicago, not the harbor, to Hessville. And when I was growing up, there was beautiful. It was a lot of trees, there was no Morton High School, there was no Scott Middle School, it was acres and acres of farmland and trees. And that little phrase I said, me llamo Linda Anguiano, I didn't learn that till I was in high school. You know why? My parents were bilingual, my grandparents were bilingual, and my great-grandparents were forced to be bilingual when the United States stole Texas and other parts of Mexico. Okay, but in our nice little neighborhood, there was a petition going around in Hessville that they didn't, out of two hundred and fifty homes, they didn't want these two Mexican families who came over from that cockroach-infected harbor and living in their nice white area. Well, they didn't have my parents' name on there because they thought we were Italian, Anguiano. And my mother was short, and she had a short haircut, they thought she was Japanese. Now, my parents protected me from that discrimination for eighteen years. I didn't find out till I was going off to college. So you can talk about subtle, being naive, that we have to make compromises, that we have to not be so belligerent, and all other kinds of names that we've been called, but as one of the witnesses, the last meeting said, there's over two thousand DACA residents in Hammond, or people who are qualified for DACA if they don't get deported first. Now, President Vence, you talked to me after the meeting, and you said that you were going to meet with Mayor McDermott, and you were gonna resolve this once and for all. Now, I don't know what that meant, if you were gonna just somehow kick us off the public hearing portions, or the public speaking portion, but I think it takes great courage to stand up to bullies, whether they're the Donald Trumps of the world, or your very nice neighbor who doesn't invite you to come into their house when you're a child, because they don't like Mexicans. And I used to have to wait outside in the snow while my classmates changed from school clothes to play clothes. So, yeah, those are subtle. I didn't, I didn't receive the harsh, harsh, extreme discrimination that many other Latinos who come from the same part of the world as my ancestors. So, we're all immigrants, yeah, there's burden of proof and legal fees, but this is something that won't cost you. But this is something that won't cost you in the long run. And we have to look at the future. We have to have vision. We can't make decisions out of fear. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam President.
Public expression is now closed.
Madam Chairlady.
Madam President.
I think the one person wanted to sign in. He wasn't able to sign in.
He said he signed in.
I do not see him on here at all, but please feel free.
Maxwell Wolf, 7128 Monroe Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. So, I'm here to talk about DACA as well. And it's just, it's gotten a little old. It's the fourth time we've come. I noticed a couple councilmen are kinda sitting back in their chairs and sighing and like, ah, here's another DACA person here to talk about something we've heard over and over again. And the reason we're still here talking about it is because you guys aren't doing anything about it. We're here to support people that are our neighbors, are, came here from Mexico, but we know them. And you're still doing it. Like, nothing's changing. And it's not anything that's supposed to, that can be affected by the government. It's First Amendment right to speak. It's a resolution. It's not changing a law. It's just a resolution. It's the First Amendment right, freedom of speech. And if you're too scared to express that First Amendment right, then you shouldn't be on the council, because it's our own people. So, thank you.
Madam President. I'd like to refer back to new and unfinished business.
Okay, so, once again, I will close public expression. Councilman Higgs is looking to return to new and unfinished business. All those in favor? I need a second. Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Torres to return to new and unfinished business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Clerk Golick, roll call vote, please.
Barkovich.
Yes.
Spitali. Kalwinski.
Yes.
What was that? Yes?
Yep.
Torres.
Yes.
Higgs.
Yes.
Emerson.
No.
Worple.
Yes.
Raichels.
No.
Vanez.
Yes. Motion carries, seven in favor, two opposed.
Madam President.
Councilman Higgs.
First issue, first thing I'd like to address at first, to say thank you to my mom for coming out. The last council meeting, of course, I'm my mother's child, and she knows her child. And I really appreciate, even in her elderly years, and me being a caregiver to her, she was able to come out and make it very clear to what transpired at our home when I got a little ill. And for that, I am grateful, and I thank God for having her. Secondly, I needed some clarity as to your issue, ma'am. So, if you can come up and give me some more clarity on that. And as you step up, I wanna make something perfectly clear. I was elected in this position to serve the people. And as long as I'm in this position, I will continue to do that. And sometimes, no matter what you do, it's not good enough. And sometimes, you're attacked, criticized, and mistreated. And for that, I don't, I don't really understand. Maybe it's not for me to understand, but in time, God will give me the sense to understand.
Madam Chairlady, point of order.
But I want to personally...
If councilman wishes to have people speak on a new and unfinished business, we have to take a vote on that.
As soon as he's done speaking.
So, I just wanted to make that clear, because even, I've never done anything personally to anyone on, with my colleagues here on the council. And for some reason or another, it seems to keep happening, there's a no vote just to have, to express a concern or something in particular to the residents of the city of Hammond. And for that, I'm puzzled with. But whatever it is, I would hope that you would set it aside. And certainly, I have nothing against anyone here. So, whatever's going on with you, I pray that you remove it from your heart. Ma'am, if you could, if we could have a vote, if necessary, for her to speak.
Motion by Councilman Higgs to allow, and I can't remember your name. Forgive me to speak.
Tamara Nanieta Ritchie.
Is there a second?
Second.
All righty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I just needed some clarity as to what you were requesting.
In regards to, my concern is that we have a daycare. And we are recently being harassed over the last two years by a state representative. She's been out several times, and she'll tell us to do something. We do it, and she come back, and she finds something else wrong. And then, most recently, our experience has been, last, two weeks ago, she came out, and we noticed things missing from our files and from birth certificates, things that we require when people sign up, and we know that they had to give it to us for their children, their medical records and things like that. So, we were getting different demands from her stating these items weren't in the file. However, we know they're in the file because we can't register you without those items. So, each person, when we register them, we require certain documents. And so, it's just kinda getting to be a nightmare for us now. And I'm concerned, because I've seen her close daycares. And so, I'm just reaching out now for what other steps we could take.
Madam Chairlady.
Yes, Councilman.
You say state representative? So, is that Linda Lawson you're talking about?
It's state representative, yes, in Indianapolis.
A state person that works for the state, not the state representative?
Yeah.
You have that person's name or anything like that?
Yes.
You need to be clear with that, because you'll be, they'll be accused for something, and they didn't do it. So, you better be sure you clarify.
It's a state representative. Consultant. That's exactly what it is. And basically, what she was saying is true. It's basically, at this point, first, you, she had you, spending money, spending money. Put the fence here. We do it. Take the divider down. It's like more like, it's not only this facility we're new, but she has closed a lot of facilities. And then, writing up stuff, going in there, breaking stuff, doing things that's, really, she should not be in that position. Because it's, it's at the point, I didn't miss doctors' appointments, dentist's appointments, having, it's like more of like a personal attack. But also, it's, it's on like a personal level.
Right. She's made comments such as, you only have kids that's...
Oh, you only have a black, poor kid that's on assistant anyway. And all five of my workers hurt her.
Madam President.
Councilman Worple.
Can I ask what level you are?
What level right now? I'm a one. Because dealing with her, I mean, I've been serving Indiana since 2008. I was at level three. My husband got sick, things happened, so I came back and opened a center. So, for me to get to level four is nothing.
Okay, is it a residential?
No, it's a home. I mean, it's a...
Yeah, it's a residential.
Yeah, residential. I'm sorry.
You're talking about the inspectors. I think you had one on Windmarsh Street at one time, around 169th. Didn't you work at one there?
No, no, I had one, but she wouldn't let me get it open, because she don't like ministries. You have a choice to be three. It's three, licensed, unlicensed, or ministry. She don't like ministries.
There's level one on up to four, right?
It's one to four, yes.
And what you're saying is, they're coming in and inspecting and harassing you while you're, while they're inspecting it?
Yeah, well, to be, what happened, to be clear on what happened, I wrote to the governor's office. When I wrote to the governor's office on her, then they said that she had to come out with someone with her. That means that two of us, because of the things that she was doing. And I reported to the governor's office. So, however, she been coming out by herself, just nitpicking, nitpicking, you know? I said, well, you told us. So, I called my worker, that been working with me from day one. I said, well, what did she tell us about the fence? He said, oh, she said the right side is for the smaller kids, and the bigger side is for the after-school kids. I don't care what I say. You should know the rules. I said, well, if you're the licensed consultant, you pose a, if you're telling me one thing, I'm doing what you're saying, then you coming back, it's like... So, it's like a no-win. It's a constant battle. We don't know what to do.
Well, I guess my question is, it's the state. So, what is it you're asking the council to do? I mean...
Well, I just want you guys to be aware, because I'm sure you all see these daycares opening, closing, opening, closing. It's not the person. We put big money into these facilities. So, we know what we doing. It's just her.
Madam President.
I understand.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman.
I would request that you probably contact the NAACP and have them actively...
We already done it. We in process of doing it. I'm going all the way.
I'm a, I'm a life member, and, you know, I won't go into detail with that. But they should be actively participating in your course of action as well. They should be addressing your concerns. And I understand, and I sympathize with you, because sitting here, being in this position, is not easy for me as well, especially when you speak to the issues. And like I stated previously, I have no hostility, no hatred towards any of my colleagues here. But sometimes, I feel the same way you're discussing this issue, that's the same way I feel. But if anything that I can do personally to help you, I'm certainly willing to do. I think you're, you sent a letter to the governor. I can't believe that they're not responding and giving...
They sent it back to her supervisor, which play games with her, too. Once God revealed it, I'm like, oh, both of them playing games. So, it's like a no-win battle. So, I did reach out to a lot of, you like what you said. Already done that. But he told me to make sure I come here first.
Who told you that? The president of the NAACP?
No, someone else.
We, we do not control the governor's office.
Well, I know that. I know that. I know that. He said, just come, talk to the alderman, which here, you all don't have aldermen. So, it's councilmen.
Where's some record now? And certainly, if there's anything outside of the spectrum that I can assist you with, feel free to contact me. But I sympathize with you, and hopefully, you can get it addressed, because no one wants to continuously put money in the business and can't move forward. That's like saying, we don't want you here, and your business is just closed. And that's not fair.
And it's not her choice. You can't not tell me where you don't want me, because that'd make me really fight to be there. Thank you for your time.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Worple.
I wanna go back to a comment that was made during public expression about what it takes courage to do. And I agree with you guys on DACA. It's not lip service. I spent 37 years on the street, walking up to people's doors every day. I've seen discrimination. I've seen families taken apart, whether it's a divorce, death, whatever. But what takes courage is to weigh a document that you guys, some of your speakers say is important, some say is symbolic. But you're asking us to take a document that by what some of the speakers said is symbolic and weigh that against $2.7 million in federal dollars. The easy thing for me to do, and I've said this before, and as long as you guys keep coming and say it, I'll repeat it. The easy thing for me to do is vote yes on it and walk around and knock on doors next year and say, vote for me, because I look what I supported. That's easy. The hard thing is to say, I don't wanna risk $2.7 million of the taxpayers' money. Don't lecture me on courage. It takes more guts to do what we're doing than it does to stand there and say, pass something symbolic. That's all I got to say.
Madam President, I make a motion. Did we go back to the regular order of business?
Motion by Councilman Higgs, second by Councilman Torres to return to the regular order of business. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Spitali. Second by Councilman Emerson. All those in favor?
Aye.